Well, it is the appointed hour by my watch. We don't have a...
We don't have a clock.
We don't have a clock on the wall, so we'll go by my watch. So I will call to order this special meeting of the Select Board, April 26. And we do have two published additions to the agenda. Four-wheel-drive dump truck bid tabulation and paramedic vacancy. Any other additions at this point?
No.
Okay. Then let's move right along. The next item is citizen comments. You have something, Edwin?
I do. I passed it by Phil the other day.
Come on in.
Because I understood that he... The village had maybe a little money for the sidewalks. And so I thought, as long as everybody uses the sidewalk, it didn't matter whether it was town people or whether it was village people or... How would you folks feel about maybe putting a percentage into a sidewalk fund? Would that be right, Phil? I didn't write it down.
So you're asking the Select Board for the town to contribute some money towards repaving the village sidewalks?
That's what...
That's what you'd like to see, more paved sidewalks?
Yeah. Sidewalk brought up because of the fact that, well, myself, I have to watch my feet sometimes. And when I'm not watching my feet, I mean, I'm having to watch the traffic. My feet get mixed up, and down I'll go. So...
Any particular sidewalks you're thinking of? I mean, up near where you live?
No, no.
Or no? You just said about the village. Okay.
I'm just talking about the village.
Yeah.
Like down there by the post office.
Okay.
And a few others down at the lower end of the village. Maybe down where the dump was. But that's the only thing I was concerned about, because I think I have been known to bring up things, maybe at town meetings, that, well, should've gone through somewhere else first.
Well, Joe's indicated he has a comment, so...
Well, wasn't the village sued a couple of years ago by a lady herself in front of the green light?
No.
It didn't come about?
No suits.
No suits. Because I remember one lady fell as I was coming out of work.
It's true. People do fall occasionally.
Yeah. And she called me later, asking for her lawyer's name.
Yeah.
And I just wondered if it...
I was contacted. I sent that to our insurance company, and our insurance company would've made a determination if the village had any negligence, which I believe they determined the village did not have negligence.
Are there any sidewalks that the town maintains at this point, or any portion?
Just the ones on bridges.
Okay.
Because you're responsible for bridges. So in the winter, you pay to shovel them.
Yeah.
And if they need maintenance.
Yeah.
There'd be a little being done down on the post office bridge, but it's a concrete site, so it's not quite...
Right.
It's easy. The village is planning to do between the town hall, say, and the rec center bridge, which is all pretty... Very, very uneven asphalt. And that's scheduled for May. It's very expensive, Ed. And there hasn't been... The last couple of winters have eaten so much money in winter mains that there's been nothing left over to do any repaving.
Have you talked to the village trustees yet, Ed, or...
No, I just talked to Phil the other day.
Just starting here, yeah. Well, we have the situation, of course, that some of us wish it was rectified, where, you know, there's some things done by the town and some things done by the village. There have been a few times when the towns helped out, village more than others, or whatever. I mean, certainly the Welcome Center was an example of that, so... But I don't know what more to say at the moment. You should go talk to the trustees as well. Anything further, Phil?
You don't have anything in your budget.
No.
I think other business at town meeting would be a good place to find out if other people in the town think it's appropriate to spend money on village sidewalks. And then it can be worked into a future budget.
To make it clear what we're saying here?
No.
It's just that the sidewalks are in the village, and we're not the ones that are responsible for maintaining them.
I understand, but what I was... What Phil just said didn't make...
At town meeting?
Right.
The very, very last thing that gets discussed is other business. It's not binding. You can't force a decision, but you can get a sense of how people feel about the idea of town tax dollars going on to village sidewalks. So if the people at town meeting are supportive, then maybe that would push the idea along. It's... With the difference between a town and village, it might as well be a whole 'nother town, because it's a separate entity.
Because I say that... That's one place I thought I was to bring it up, and I didn't think of it until...
Yeah, that's true. You've got to make your notes ahead of time, so you follow along your own program, what you want to say. That's true.
And I just say I just was just curious on what...
So do you walk a lot in the village, Ed?
I'm apt to.
Okay. So you drive down to go for a walk?
I'm apt to. Start right from home and up over Rose Hill or...
Oh, good for you.
And then I come down. But I say I just noticed it the other day, how unbalanced I was. And I start watching my feet, and it's like keeping your eye on the road and...
Well, I guess the message we have to give you, Ed, is that, number one, you can talk to the village trustees, and, number two, you can wait till next March, which I know is a long wait.
No.
You've got some done this year.
Yeah.
I mean, what would the... I think then, if I wait till next March, that'd be the better time to do it.
That's when your fellow people that pay town taxes can weigh in on supporting giving a grant to the village for sidewalks. That's what it would be.
So then, for instance, how did the police... One day where we... Don't we town pay some for the police?
Yes. You have a contract with the village for police services, and that was voted at a town meeting.
So then my next move would be to wait till next town meeting and bring it up at the end of the meeting?
At the end of the meeting, then you would get an idea if people support your theory that it's appropriate.
So then I wouldn't need to talk to the village trustees. Am I... Is that right?
Yeah.
That's what I'll do then.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't we move...
Got some folks that want to come in?
I know. We've not used to...
Some chairs right there.
Take a chair.
Not used to such a big turnout.
A little room in a big turnout.
Well, I know. It just happens to be that today we have the little room and a big turnout. If I understand the agenda correctly, there's no old business, so we'll move on to new business. And the first item is bid tabulations for the Welcome Center addition.
We had three bidders. All of our three that we invited to bid submitted a bid. All Seasons' base bid was $99,256. Trumble Nelson was $170,300. And Upland Construction was $102,887. With the Upland bid, they proposed several deductions that I think we would want to take. They proposed a deduction of a commercial grade carpet in lieu of the epoxy floor finish that you'll find out in the Welcome Center. I think that would be nicer for an office anyway. And that's, as you can see, $3,982 deduct. I'm not sure we want to decide about baseboard fin versus heat in the slab.
Does it have heat in the slab right now?
Yeah.
It does?
So that's a $741 deduct if we chose to accept it, but that decision would not have to be made tonight. The next deduct is sheet rock and deduct the 1x6 pine paneling. And again, sheet rock is more office-like, and that's a good savings at $3,856. I think the... They're offering an $1,100 deduct to have a drywall ceiling instead of a drop ceiling, but the drop ceiling does a good job of insulating for sound.
The hand dryers.
Yes.
Yes.
For example. So there are those very good deducts offered by Upland that those two, at least, we would want to take, I think.
What's the math workout to there, Phil?
Well, say $95,000, give or take.
That's accepting deducts 1, 2, and 3, but not 4.
Well, 1 and 2 for sure, maybe 2 and...
1 and 3.
1 and 3.
1 and 3 for sure, and possibly 2.
So there's radiant heat there now in the rest of it?
Yes.
Why not stick with that?
I was going to say, I...
It's not a big...
I kind of prefer radiant heat, too. Those thin tube insulations, the furniture hits them, and then you get dinged and banged and...
That's not a big... That's not a big deal.
But I would agree, 1 and 3 look credible.
Who specified the pine paneling to begin?
Well, okay. This is what we did. To avoid paying $17,000 in architects and engineering fees, we sent the plans for the main building out and said, "This is the dimensions. This is what it's going to look like in a design that was approved by the Village Development Review Board and Design Review Board." We've got match existing for materials, trim, hardware, doors, windows, and everything. So those plans called for the suspended acoustic ceiling. Those plans called for 6-inch tongue and groove pine paneling. Those plans called for epoxy floor. And so Upland said, "Well, if this is a design build, I can build what you have on the other side for $102, but for, say, $94,000, $95,000, I can give you sheet rock walls and a carpet floor."
Why not go with all three of the... All four of them? They all seem reasonable to me.
Well, because you just decided... So we're going to keep the in-slab heat.
Yeah.
So that you don't accept that heat.
Okay. All right.
And then Phil wanted to keep the suspended tile, too.
I think you want to keep the suspended tile for sound protection and not accept 4, so 1 and 3.
All right. I got you.
I'm questioning whether the baseboard radiation would be better than the floor. I think the floor is probably better.
Well, that's right. You know, these are suggestions that we don't have to accept.
Oh, yeah. I understand.
I think we're agreeing with you, John. Yeah.
I think the radiant heat is the best way to go.
Yeah.
Certainly efficient.
So I'll make a motion then to accept the bid from Upland Construction and doing the alternatives, number 1 and 3, and not 2 and 4, to get the price down to whatever that works out to amount.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion's made. Motion seconded. Any further discussion on it? Not hearing any. I guess we'll call for a vote. Those in favor of the motion as made involving Upland Construction, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess we've made the decision. Thank you. The next item is bid tabulations involving the diesel fuel...
No, the next one is the loan.
That's the Welcome Center.
Oh. B under Welcome Center for the loan.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Item B under Welcome Center, the loan. You've got to pay for it now that we've picked it.
Exactly. So there were two... We put it out, chucked it to every local bank, and we got two proposals in for 20-year fixed annual payment. Some of the banks said that that's too long. They didn't want to go that long. But we got two. We have Mascoma at 1.95% and Lake Sunapee at 3.4%. And that was based on $100,000, but we'll only borrow what's needed tomorrow.
Right.
It looks like it's less than that.
It will be.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Mascoma Savings Bank for 1.95%.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion to go with Mascoma Savings Bank, please say aye.
Aye.
Any negatives? And I think that's what we're going to do. Thank you. All right. Now we've...
Now we've got cats on it, haven't we?
Yes. We'll get entertainment. Yeah.
We don't have our suspended acoustical season.
Well, it is sort of an acoustic ceiling, but we need an acoustic floor. I think then we're appropriate now to move on to diesel fuel bids.
I received one bid that met our spec, and what I'd like to do is put it out again and cast a wider net.
Okay. And this is... What does this field use for?
Dump trucks, motor grates, all our heavy equipment, fire trucks.
Yep. Okay. Good. Then we will table that, in other words, and have you readvertise it.
I just feel better to get a cast a wider net.
Good. Then the next item is town clerk vacancy. And you provided a copy of Vermont statute about when a town officer resigns, his or her office.
Yeah.
And notice of this vacancy shall be posted by the legislative body, which is us. And...
We've had it posted, I believe it's been online, that the vacancy exists and that you intended to fill that vacancy tonight.
Yeah.
And we had a nice letter from our current assistant town clerk, Charles.
Eight years. You've been there for eight years.
How time flies.
Wow.
And is that the only...
That's correct.
That's the only... Okay. Good.
It appears to me that he is more than qualified.
Right.
Well, it is... It's a complex job, so it's good that you already know it.
Every dog is...
Lot of big learning curve if you don't. Yeah.
I'd like to commend Jay on his years of service. He's done a fine job for us as well.
Has.
And I'd like to make the motion that we fill the vacancy... I guess this would be a temporary, Phil?
This is until...
Until the next election.
Town meeting elections.
Town meeting election.
At that point, Charlie can run for a three-year term.
Yeah. So I would make the motion that we fill the vacancy by appointing Charlie Dagnor as our new town clerk.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, then I guess we'll vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sound like it was unanimous?
Thank you.
Any questions, Charlie?
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I want to remind everybody that's here to come by Friday afternoon...
Friday afternoon is Jay's...
And say goodbye to Jay.
Farewell, buddy.
Stop by the end of the day.
What time?
3:30 to 5:30.
That's great. I won't be here, but I might still say goodbye.
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, moving on, we have a trustee of public funds vacancy. And I see one letter here.
Right. You filled one of the spots last meeting with Jane Smith.
Yeah.
And now you have a letter from Matt Powers. He's the director of the Historical Society, anybody watching at home that didn't know. And does a lot of work in that realm with the trusts. So Charlie, we're going to make that effect at 5:00 PM on this Friday afternoon. So in case somebody has to sit in a jail cell over the weekend after we do.
Need a pen, John? Thank you. All right. So does anyone want to offer a motion on our trustee of public funds?
I'll make a motion that we accept and have Matthew Powers.
I'll second it.
Good. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Not? Let us vote. Those in favor of Matthew Powers filling the vacancy for trustees of public funds, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank him for offering.
Yes. This is a pleasure when we actually have people that come forward.
All right. Give that to you.
And then we have a planning commission vacancy. It's a night for vacancies. Marilyn Spalding has stepped down. And we have a memo from Michael Brands that Jeffrey Bendis has asked to be considered. He's also currently the chair of the Design Review Board. He provided a resume as well.
Is that village or town Design Review Board?
Yeah, if you village, because I don't... There is a town. Yeah. It does say here, this position requires approval of the trustees and the Select Board. Right.
And the village trustees have approved Jeff.
They have.
Pending your approval to make it official.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to accept Jeffrey Bendis.
Second it.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, then those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, so that I could hear, so that is filled as well.
That is what he does in the spring.
All right.
That's a first.
I suspect some people are here for the Economic Development Commission, so... I guess I will just turn it over to you.
Should we start?
Yes. Might as well.
There's several members, Jody Natale, myself, Keith Anderson, Gail Childs, and Barry Milstein are here from the EDC. So we have a few items. The first that's on here is really A and B can be combined. It's really a report on the RFI that we sent out for telecommunications in December. And remember that our goal that we set out, we set out two objectives. One was to increase the resident population. The second was to bring more visitors that can form a connection to the community. Not necessarily in that order, but that's our overall objective that we're trying to do. So all the activities that we're engaged in are trying to inform those two objectives. So in December, what we sent out, or early in the fall last year, we really said, "Something that makes it more plausible to live in Woodstock for people from other places is to have, of course, high-speed interconnectivity." This is not news. But we set out a goal to see if we could work with the existing telco providers to increase speeds of up to 1 gig bits per second. So we sent out this RFI, Request for Information, and it was, "We're in search of internet connectivity at every residence and business location with symmetrical bandwidth of 1 gigabit per second, with sufficient capacity to accommodate bandwidth-intensive applications without a material degradation in speed or reliability of the service, and the services should be affordable to residential and commercial customers." So we sent out this RFI. We got responses from, first of all, SovereNet, first expressed some interest, then they withdrew. Really wasn't what they did. VTEL expressed some interest, and in the end, they said, "Well, we've got other things to do. We don't have the $4 million that we think it would cost in our pockets. We need some subsidies, so we're out." So then it left us talking to the three different telcos, Comcast, FairPoint, and EC Fiber. They all responded to the RFI in writing. EC Fiber responded and described the campaign and described what they're doing. And it is their mission, after all, to provide fiber to the home for every business and residence in their district, the 24 towns. Dave Brown is here. He can speak to that more. And it was a question of, were they going to be able to extend that service to Woodstock within the timeframe we were looking for and the speeds? So that's what we're really trying to achieve for them, as well as Comcast and as well as FairPoint. So Comcast responded, saying, "Oh, yeah, we can do that." But in fact, when we actually dug down a little deeper, they're saying, "They're not to every home or business. They probably won't go to every home or business. They do have the technology that is coming out in the next one to two years to be able to provide 1-gig service to the homes and businesses that they serve. They're not interested in extending, as far as we know, beyond their existing service area." So much of the central business district does use Comcast, and the technology's called DOCSIS 3.1. It uses a combination of fiber and coaxial. So they have that actually in town now, but not DOCSIS 3.1 yet. FairPoint also has fiber running through the center of town, and they've provided fiber to the home, or in this case, actually, to businesses. They can do that on a custom arrangement basis. And they, of course, are required, because of their incumbent telco status, to go to every home and business already. Certainly to every home. That's the requirement. And FairPoint is... Has complied with the law of providing broadband, but it's not 1 gig, and it certainly isn't. But we met with them, and we were actually very impressed by their presentation as to the technology that they're investing in and how they're really committed to bringing Woodstock up to speed. So that was pretty good. And I think the... With 33 megabits per second is what they can provide, and a very... It's not an overwhelming number of people that have actually signed up for the services they can currently get, which is kind of surprising. So that was interesting with FairPoint. The big difference that... The big issue is, in Woodstock, is the conduits through the village and access to the conduits. Ownership aside, Comcast and FairPoint already have access to the conduits, and they control the conduits, and that connects different areas of town. So they can already do that. EC Fiber right now is not able to do that until the legal question gets solved, can they go in through the same conduits? There are some real physical issues, some that pose some challenges to that. The conduits, we thought it was just one system of, you know, six tubes running through. Not so. So we actually spent some time... We met with all the different telcos. Phil got some drawings for us. We met with Eustis Cable, that draws... That is the contractor throughout the village, hired by either FairPoint or Comcast at different times, to run cable through the conduits. It's a big issue. So anyway, and then EC Fiber's still committed to it. What we wanted to figure out is, what could the EDC do to help facilitate 1 gig to the community? Because anything short of that, in our opinion at the time, is not enough to say to somebody, "You've got to move here. We've got a gig." So in the end, EC Fiber came out with this campaign. It's now got access to municipal financing. The campaign is still going on. It ends at the end of this month. But Woodstock is not in a position to be a winner in that campaign right now. In our estimation, it wasn't going to be able to win. FairPoint is not going to extend 1 gigabit per service by January 1, 2018, but is going to make some investments in their infrastructure. And they're willing to work with us in a collaborative environment and try to do that. Comcast is not going to extend its network, but does already have some of that technology running through the village and in parts of the town. So our conclusion was that we're really... We formed a subcommittee to work with the different telcos to do whatever we can to help those telcos aggressively extend gigabit service, or, excuse me, broadband speeds, hopefully up to a gigabit, in the next two years. So we realized we weren't able to achieve our objective, but we're working with the telcos to do it. So we formed a subcommittee. They started to meet already, and we're very optimistic about what they can achieve. So that's a report. I've submitted some things in writing to the town. Did I get it?
You got it.
No, it's very interesting. And, I mean, I knew bits and pieces of it. It's great that you've done that work, yeah.
Is it appropriate to lump EC Fiber in as one of the telcos, given that we're a part owner? Given that we're a part owner?
That's a good question. So if you're talking about providing affordable, high-speed internet connections to the entire town, and which entity is able to do that within a timeframe that we were looking for, we had to evaluate which ones were able to do that. The question that we were posing is, if, if we could raise $4 million, because we came, they came back with some specific estimates of what it would cost in actually order to extend the fiber to every home. Is there a way to raise the money? Would we have to mount a campaign? Could we fund the campaign from EDC funds? We certainly can't pay the $4 million from EDC funds, but perhaps we could raise a campaign. So then the question became, can we win? Can we raise enough, could we get a campaign going, not the EC Fiber campaign, but in order to raise that money in order to support EC Fiber? So we had to look at that whenever we're talking about spending taxpayers' money from EDC financing, to see, is another telco positioned already to provide those services without saying, no, it's only EC Fiber? So we felt obligated to actually look at all the different players, to say, who is it? And what do they need from us? Is there a way to help them provide this service to the entire town? We struggled with your question a lot. And it would be easy just to say, yeah, absolutely. We're just gonna say, all those in favor of EC Fiber, let's go. But when looking at, remember affordability, timeframe, speed, those are the three things we're looking at.
And it sounded like what you're saying is it may be a blend.
It's most certainly a blend until the law changes or until EC Fiber has access to the underground conduits.
Yeah.
And with Comcast able to deliver that type of service over its existing infrastructure with some additional technology in the near future, FairPoint's already making some of those infrastructure changes, so it's provided fiber to some commercial establishments on a custom arrangement. So that's pretty impressive that they've already done that.
Within their existing area?
Yeah, yeah.
But not covering the entire town?
That's right. They haven't extended that to the entire town. I mean, we had the president of FairPoint Vermont and the three other representatives from FairPoint who met with us and describing the business case of trying to extend fiber to every home versus the twisted copper pairs that they have now. And you just can't make a business case on it. For instance, Portsmouth, New Hampshire does have up to one gig service with FairPoint. And Woodstock, let's compare the two then. They have an average, hang on, I want to make sure I get the number right. The density of population in FairPoint is considerably different. They have 21,000 people in 15 square miles, or 1,360 per square mile. We have 3,003 people, or 3,000 people in 44.6 square miles, or 67 people per square mile. So the difference is palpable. They can do it in a place like Portsmouth. They can't do it in a place like Woodstock. We had, one of our commissioners is Tom Weschler. He was talking about service to his house on Prosper Road, almost near the Mount Tom entrance. He talked to Comcast, and I can't remember, was it $60,000 they gave him as a bid?
Yes.
$60,000 to bring it from Route 12 to his house. Certainly, that's not affordable and feasible. But the people from FairPoint were saying, we just cannot justify the expense. We can't pay for it. Unless you subsidize it. Like, whoa, wait a minute. So what would that mean? So that's when we said, well, let's work together and see what you can do to the existing services.
So, Alan?
So, I mean, you've been talking a little bit about the cost, but I mean, did you really look at affordability for what it means once you actually get it, individual, what they're offering? So, I mean, a commercial service to a downtown business, under any of these three scenarios, what would the end cost be?
We talked, we looked at a lot of their costs. We looked at all their rate cards, as to what's available now and what it costs. We looked at the residential basis. We had the fortune of having Barry Millstone, who is an in-owner right on the edge of Woodstock, but serviced by VTAL, and your cost, I think, for a gig is $60 per month or $40 per month. About $40. So we have that as one example on one extreme. And looking at the other extreme, as to what does it cost to get 500 meg right now through Comcast? And that's a lot more than what Barry just said. And so our question was always about affordability. So we have the committee looking at that specifically to drive that.
So you don't have that information yet?
I couldn't give you a spreadsheet, but we have it all on the rate cards, and it is, has been part of our discussion.
I was just wondering who's winning that game?
Is it Comcast or FairPoint that has low-income affordability plans?
Comcast. Comcast has something called Internet Essentials and $9.95 a month for people that, yeah.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the average commercial business downtown.
Right now, who is winning that battle?
Yes.
Comcast is winning that battle. FairPoint admits, they admitted to us, they've done a bad job of marketing and a bad job of covering the area.
And then if EC Fiber was actually able to get to downtown, where would they fall in that range?
I don't know.
I mean, I'd just be curious to see, see what that is, because if that's really what we're trying to do, it'd be nice to make sure that we're comparing end costs as well.
Yeah, we are. So that was our first issue.
Okay. Great update, very fascinating, yes. Move on.
The second was our funding request. You have two funding requests in front of you. One is from Bluff Island Concerts Presents, right?
Yeah, I see that.
Okay, Bluff Island Music Presents Concert Series, and then also Lobsters on the Green. So remember that the 1% options tax funds the EDC fund. In November, we received approximately $74,000 into the fund. In February, received approximately $63,000. Of that, 14, 16, I can't remember the specific amount that's been committed, but not significant amount at this point. Yeah. It's at least 16, but... So the fund was directed by, one of the discussions around getting this approved was really to be reserved for promotion of events and promoting the town, and also for funding special projects. So the two in front of you are really promotional events. Bluff Island Music Presents is actually a five-part concert series that Jay Nash out of Heartland is organizing together with Pentangle. Jay Nash, I learned afterwards, is an international artist who has formed his studio. He's performed with many nationally-known artists. The one that I like the most is Sara Bareilles, that he has done concerts with. But his idea is to work with Pentangle to subsidize some of the cost of their travel of these artists, as well as the marketing. So it's $1,000 per concert. He's planning on putting on five concerts. This doesn't represent the entire budget. We struggled with this for a long time as a commission, and finally, we came upon the decision to recommend it to you for funding. Because he was really talking about establishing more of a culture than it was just five concerts. So establishing a place where nationally-known artists and up-and-coming artists that are relevant in his term could come perform and spend time.
He spoke, he spoke about, he spoke at length about his own professional connections with a lot of renowned artists in the music industry. And his idea is, as Charlie mentioned, he has a recording studio at his home. So his idea was, a lot of these guys do a gig in Boston, and then they'll go up and they'll do a gig in Burlington or Albany and pass right through here. And maybe stop at his house and write a song, or do something in the musical field, maybe write something for a commercial, and stay right here in town. And then, while we're here, why not have a performance? Well, they have to be paid. And so, this is, this is an idea as about establishing Woodstock as a cultural center for these artists to come and play and compose, and actually be a part of the community, rather than just, you know, five individual concerts, as might be interpreted by the grant. It's more of a cultural thing.
So that's the first one.
So let me ask you a question. On the Jay Nash proposal, how would you be able to determine what good it did, what income and what the economic activity did bring to the town?
That's a fair question. We have a pretty detailed rubric in terms of what is the impact, you know, how many people actually attended. In terms of the actual dollars spent, then we have to look at on a quarterly basis. So we don't have the finite detail to look at beyond that. But the number of people that attend, where are they from, and that kind of thing.
And you had anticipated concerts initially might be at the Town Hall, but could someday be big enough to be in the arena or something like that?
Or Suicide Six.
Or Suicide Six, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right.
Charlie, could you recap how these concerts would differ from the concerts that historically Pentangle has scheduled and partnered with, excuse me, other organizations like the Inn and so forth?
Well, first, if I can address that. First of all, it's the artists themselves. The artists that would be performing here wouldn't be here in the first place. Because of his connections professionally, he's gonna be able to bring these artists here. If it wasn't for Jay, you'd have to depend on somebody like Buzz used to do it, for, you know, when he had these concerts at Suicide Six. But filling that void, Jay can get people here that would normally not perform here at all. That's one thing.
Yeah, he indicated folks from the West Coast, over in California, to bring them over to expose them to Woodstock and Vermont, the area. That is what we looked at.
The other piece is, he's gonna be working with Pentangle and Artistry.
Right.
And producing these events. So it's not without them, but it's, it is his access to the artists that are current, relevant artists, instead of having somebody coming and play their greatest hits. It was funny, when he was presenting to us, who was it, Roger McGinn? Is that who was warming up downstairs? He said, there's no famous artists that come to town.
So would these be free concerts for the community?
No.
No.
No. He is talking about combining them with some of the Brown Bag concerts. As reconfigured, it would be on the green. The Brown Bag is talking about having them on the green afterward, that kind of stuff.
All the summer will be in the evening.
So it might be that an artist who is in part of the series would be one of those artists, but until the schedules could coordinate, he can't guarantee it. So that's part of how to pay for Pentangle, for the advertisement, everything else. This is only part of the expense.
But another element, just to clarify, is that he would be inviting each of the artists to his studio. They'd spend a day or two, they would create a piece of music that would be recorded, created in Woodstock. That would then be something that would sustain, it could be used to advertise Woodstock, and who knows what else it could generate.
It would be part of giving Woodstock an identity in this field of music.
Woodstock presents.
His studio's Heartland. So it's, in all honesty, yeah. His wife is a physical therapist in town, Rebecca Nash. Do you know her? Once we finally found out it was related to Rebecca, it was like, oh, okay.
Everybody knows Rebecca.
Okay. Do you want to present both or act on each, or, but go ahead then?
Well, you decide after you hit the second one.
Yeah, all right, there you go.
The second one was originally presented to us by the Woodstock Rotary Club on their own, and this is to create a new event that they had originally said was Lobster Fest. Then since renamed Lobsters on the Green, and it's in conjunction with the Woodstock Chamber of Commerce. So they are really co-applicants. They aim to establish in July a new event in Woodstock as a fundraiser for the Woodstock Rotary Club, but also as a community event to provide a big lobster bake. Now, it does sound a little odd to have a lobster bake in Woodstock. We addressed that question. Many other Rotary Clubs throughout New England have done this. Many inland Rotary Clubs as well, not just the ones on the coast. And then, this is seed money to build this event, to come up with a design. They originally presented it as to fund the hard costs, the cost of renting the tables and chairs and that kind of stuff. We were more interested in seeing whether or not this was going to be, in addition to the calendar, long-term, that would bring in more people into town, and part of that, making it a better place to live and enrich the community. So we spent a lot of time debating this, because, well, aren't we just then making donations to the groups that the Woodstock Rotary Club donates to? But we really felt like the establishment of another event on the calendar that brings people to town was important enough to warrant a recommendation to the select board. So that's what the request is, for $3,500. And that will be borne out by how many people attend, and what they write. So it is a one-time funding request, not an annual request. We made quite sure of that from the representatives presenting to us.
Is there a date for that?
Yes, July 23rd. Their initial goal is to have 500 people attend, and they would like to grow that, I think, to 1,000.
Just to get them going. You know, if they can generate enough presence, then they'll be off on their own.
I believe they already have permission to use the green.
Candace?
Candace, the chairman of the board, yes, of trustees, yeah.
I was at a meeting once where Joe brought up that we have too many of these events, so we'll be in gridlock, but...
I remember that.
I don't remember that. Joe who?
However, however, that said, I didn't mean that to say I'm against it. It's just, we could get killed by our successor if we're not careful. Okay. We've heard the two presentations. Any questions, motions to be made?
This isn't an either-or, is it?
No.
No, these are separate requests.
Separate.
Yeah, they're separate.
So you can vote on them separately also. It's, I'm leaving it open.
We would ask that you approve the $8,500 request. Totally up to you.
Well, that's what we have that board for, so I'm gonna make the motion that we go along with their recommendations and approve the expenditures.
I'll second.
$3,500 for the Lobster Fest, $5,000 for the music concerts.
Yeah, I mean, my, thank you for the motion and the second. And I will, in discussion, just say, my feeling is that...
You guys have done a lot of work.
Commission's doing a great job, very impressive, very thorough, and our oversight is just that oversight. But anyway, okay. Any other discussion?
Great job.
If not, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more.
One more.
One more.
You saved the biggest for last.
Uh-oh, okay.
No, no, we should've started with the first one then. It's on your agenda as a $60,000 request for a public relations firm. It's actually $70,000.
Went up while we waited. We should've started with the first.
So I'm gonna give some of the background, and then Keith Anderson's gonna give the details. The background is that, early on, as a commission, we were looking at, how do we promote Woodstock effectively? And we had a long series of discussions about the benefits of hiring a public relations firm to do so. And this is in addition to what other private businesses may do, such as the Woodstock Inn or another business may also have a PR firm. This is really to promote Woodstock as a place to visit, but also a place to live and start a business, raise a family. So we really want to really promote that image. So we set out in December with an initial RFP, and we got very few responses, very few. So we decided we would reboot it again and recruit public relations firms, and we did that. And we got some great responses to those. And then we interviewed those people. They were due by March 15th. And we sat and met with them and interviewed a number of firms. So here to talk about the details is Keith Anderson.
Charlie, so as you mentioned, we sent it out originally in December. We had meager response, so we cast a wider net. We also reached out to the state of Vermont to look at their pre-approved marketing department, or PR firms that they looked at, and added them. So we had a total of 11 firms that we reached out to specifically with this proposal, and spoke with a good number of them. We had about eight applicants come back, and then out of that, we had five actually agree to come and present to us. And out of that, we actually had four... And out of that, we actually had four that showed up. Out of that four, Barry Millstone, Charlie, and I sat through all of them, Joe and, I'm sorry, Nick.
Nick Farah.
Nick Farah also sat through a couple of the presentations as well. We had a rubric set up, setting up sort of the criteria for what we wanted to see out of them. And again, all of this was done in the expectation that they are going to help drive relevant traffic to us and also help foster long-term relationships, so people will come here and move and raise families here. And so during that process, two really stuck out. Their names were Warner Communications, a firm out of Manchester by the Sea, New Hampshire, and then another firm that has an office in Boston and an office in Burlington. That name is People Making Good. And those two firms both came in at very similar level of accomplishments in their past, but there was the fees that we were very interested in. The target for this was originally about $60,000, and that information was shared with each one of these firms as we interviewed them on the phone. They came back with proposals. I said, you know, you are welcome to submit proposals that are above that $60,000, but that is our target amount. People Making Good came back at a much higher cost, and so did Warner originally. We came back and had, through the interview process and reference check, asked them to go back and sharpen their pencils, which they had. And so during the last meeting at the EDC, we sat down and talked about each one of these firms, went through, again, the matrix to determine our decision and weighted and why we felt that way, and we walked away feeling really good about Warner Communications. A sample of their deck is right here.
Here's another one I brought just in case.
And you're welcome to look at that. I think I actually left some out in the town hall area. And then...
Can you reset this?
Yeah.
Might as well look at it rather than have it sit there.
And if you would, here's Warner's final costs and a target sheet for what they will be working on specifically. We are asking this firm to reach out in a multiple amount of venues, not only going through traditional PR, which means going and working with magazines, whether it's Yankee Magazine, Travel and Leisure, or the like, but also working with social media in order to promote the town of Woodstock through the Chamber's website. We have a relationship building with the Chamber itself, and they're allowing us to use their website to help promote not only Woodstock, but the message of Woodstock and why we want people to come and move here. Warner Communications, within their entire budget, will be offering, writing some original content, doing some promotions through social media. They have video capabilities, so they can do interviews and can do local content promotions for us. And they will, of course, reach out to those key magazines and those key newspapers around, not only regionally, but nationally as well. They are currently working for the town of Rockport in a very similar fashion, and that's Rockport, Massachusetts, a town very similar to ours, except for they rely on the summertime for their tourism versus us, where we really rely on both summer and winter for our tourism. We had an interview with the town manager there to talk about the challenges and opportunities that they have working with them. They have been really pleased. It goes up for town vote every year. They have been approved three years in a row now by the town of Rockport itself, and they've actually seen residents come and move to Rockport because of some of the press that they have placed. They have a very similar population base such as ours, where we have a lot of second homers, but we have a strong residential community, and we have a very strong elementary school system within the community. They're really promoting that as a draw for individuals to come up, but also it's a nice place to have businesses as well. So Warner Communications is the firm that we are recommending. Their base fee is $60,000 a year. There is an additional $10,000 that we are asking for, so that's where the $70,000 comes from. That $10,000 is really to help defray administrative costs, potential advertising, or if we are going to do some sort of media event, such as asking people to come here and subsidize some of the costs, not only with local inns, but also restaurants or what have you. So that's where that additional $10,000 comes from. So the amount that we're asking for in total, again, is $70,000 for a one-year term with Warner Communications. Any questions?
I've only got one. Got to tell you, I'm very impressed with this tonight. I think I'm reading it correctly. You're talking about 1,000 news articles, print and digital in a year?
Yes.
That's a lot of coverage.
Yes.
These guys were very good.
They were phenomenal.
Great.
And, you know, if I might add, question, you're right, you know, I mean, I asked to get on the commission because I was concerned that, you know, the focus would be more events and that Woodstock would become a circus environment. And it's something that, you know, I'm not that crazy about having. And I felt very strong and passionate about how can we get people to move here permanently, young people with families that can put their kids in the school, that can coach Little League, join the school boards, you know, do all the things that we ask our citizens to do to make it a great place. And I was impressed with two firms. The one in Burlington, People Making Good, because they had a staff of people that did exactly that. They came from Boston, moved to Burlington, looking for a job, formed a business, and raised their families up there, just what we're asking to do. But also Warner is very successful in that venue, in that approach to Rockport and helping that community grow on a permanent basis. And so, and they did a great job with that up there. So that was my focus, and why, I, you know, I'm not a big fan of spending a lot of money on a lot of things, but I think this is something critical for the town. And it's got to be a growth thing. It's going to take a little time, you know, and it'll be a while before we see the fruition, but it's something that I think we really need.
This would be an annual expenditure?
Yes. And not paid out all at once. This is not going to say, "Hey, here's your money, see you later." So we need to work out what the contract looks like and what the payments look like. So we have to enter into that discussion, but it is a yearly contract.
They're asking for a monthly retainer.
For a particular term, or is it a year-by-year-to-year thing?
Oh, year-to-year thing.
Year-to-year.
Yeah, we would renegotiate. If they don't perform according to what we really expect, then it's the end of the contract.
It does not auto renew, and it's also within the RFP that this is subject to not only EDC approval, select board approval, and ultimately the voter approval of the town access tax.
We're not just, or we would not just be hiring them and sending them off to do this either. The first thing that would happen is there'd be a half-day to a day-long workshop here with stakeholders, and we would work together to develop kind of our intent and what do we want to do with advertising and how to, or PR, and how do we want to do it? They also, they've requested that there be a Woodstock squad, so they're looking for a group of local content providers. And we'd also, they would be providing us, as often as we want it, metrics we could kind of determine what kind of effect their work is having. And we would also be working, there would be a subcommittee within the EDC to work with them directly to request and approve their efforts.
No, it's not going to just pay them and cut them loose. You know, as a commission, we're going to keep pretty close tabs on it.
Did they offer any comment on our new logo?
They did, actually. They didn't mind it, they felt like there could be some sharpening of the tagline that goes along with it, which is actually present in their proposal there. But that is, as Barry pointed out, one of the things that they would immediately do to get the ground running is have a half-day to a day meeting up here with local stakeholders, and that would be extended out to not only local businesses, but also, you know, icons within, in the community itself, individuals that want to participate. So it would not be exclusive to the EDC, it would be extended throughout the community to have that community voice be added to it. But yes, to your specific question, they did have some commentary on the logo or the tagline specifically.
So it's important to remember that we're talking about an overall branding effect and marketing. The logo is only a small piece of it. It becomes the most visible, but the message we're sending, the stories we're telling, that's what becomes the Woodstock brand. The logo is a good, I've got my hat with a logo on it. I kind of like it, but otherwise, I know some people aren't wild about it, but this comes to symbolize the stories that you tell behind it. And that's where they said, "Well, we weren't aware of another branding effort that had been going on. We need to know about that, we need to coordinate with that, we need to make sure they're all on the same page." So, okay, that's good.
I mean, we just hired at Billy's Farm a new PR person, and I'm sure he'd be glad to help and work.
Yeah, good.
You've probably met Tom, I don't know if you've met him yet.
That's one of the things we talk about. We identified that...
Social media is phenomenal.
Them and Woodstock again, and other people.
It doubled our...
Will they be able to dovetail with these folks? They said yes.
No kidding?
Oh, yeah.
It doubled?
It doubled. Last year, I think we did around, I don't know, between 1,400 and 1,800. This year, we almost did 3,000.
I was wondering what all those cars were for. That's next house, the AV.
But he just blitzed Facebook and Twitter and, you know, just pictures and comments and all the likes that we got. But it's a constant monitoring, so it really took a lot of work.
That stuff works.
It works. That's what people are looking at today. That's where they're going.
So that's our request.
Great.
Okay. Big gulp, the big ask. Anyway.
So you're still within your budget?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, within it. We still got after this about $40,000 from the current revenues. Not to mention, this isn't going to be paid all at once. So in the month of May, we should receive another 50,000, maybe pence, and then again in August. So it goes every three months is when the revenues come in. This is perhaps our biggest ask of the year in terms of one single ask, and so we don't make it lightly.
In light of all that, I will make the motion that we grant this request to allocate $70,000 for a public relations firm.
I'll second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion among board members? If not, then I'll call for a vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No negatives, I don't believe.
I mean, the fact that they're working with you and you're going to keep an eye on them, it's a...
Oh, yeah.
Again, you know, why should, you know, we're not going to second-guess a very thorough process you've done.
Definitely, you got to...
You know, we will wish you well on that.
Yeah, thank you.
It is something that some of us have wanted for a long time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll work with Phil to negotiate the contract when we get the proposals from the committee, what it looks like.
And if any of you would like to join, the invitation is extended. If you would join that meeting, we'll let you know.
Good. Some of us are a little meeting-doubt-bothered, might very well want to join, we'll...
We know the pain, yes.
Thank you. The next item, although I guess we're getting, I don't know if you folks are here for the East End as well, but anyway, the next item on our agenda is East Central Vermont Telecommunications appointments. And I guess we have George Sadowski as a representative, David Brown as first alternate, and Chris Miller as second alternate. Anyone want to speak to that, or just...
They are current reps.
Okay.
And they're doing a great job, and they all want to continue.
Okay, good.
So I'd move that we reappoint them.
Okay?
Sure, seconded.
Seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are reappointed.
Thank you, David.
Yes. Did you have anything you want to say, David, since you're here?
Well, since I'm here, and if it's appropriate, since we're on the subject, I have a short presentation to make for you.
Yeah, you can do it now, for sure.
If I may mistake, I'll stand up.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm sitting behind Phil's head. It's okay, Phil, it's all right. So I'll give you the really short one, because I know the night goes on, but let me remind you that for the last about a year, we've been working on a strategic proposal to bring more fiber to more towns. And what I couldn't talk about at the time, because I was under nondisclosure, was the work that we were doing with an investment bank to bring some real money into this operation. And initially, in the proposal that we worked out with, with the investment bank, Woodstock was explicitly excluded from the deal. And Woodstock's representatives worked real hard through the summer to have that section of the agreement struck, and it was. So that put Woodstock on a level playing field with the 23 other towns, which was really terrific and critically important to our prospects. At town meeting, I made a presentation, some of you heard, and at that point, we couldn't talk about the financial deal because it wasn't a deal yet, but we knew enough about it to be able to make some general vague statements. And that was a little bit about if we got the funding, what we would do. Because the issue there was, you know, we've been getting our money by looking into seat cushions and things like that. It was $6.3 million, so that's, you know, pretty good seat cushions, but we needed a whole lot more than that. So the question then was, if we got that money, what would we do with it? And so by that point at town meeting, we had devised a campaign, I call it a contest. And basically, the idea was that we would ask for a show of hands among the members of the residents of our 24 towns, and then where there was most interest, we would spend the money in those towns first. The beginning of April, we signed a deal with MCM Capital Management, and they sold municipal bonds, Vermont Municipal Bonds, for EC Fiber. And I'm happy to tell you that those bonds were snatched up in a few days. Didn't take long at all, that's interesting. The other thing is that we received an unrated interest rate of 5.07%. Now, just to give you a feel for where that is on the scale of things, UVM and Fletcher Allen, two organizations which are not likely to go out of business anytime soon, and are rated, they're rated double A and A-plus, they have interest rates of 5.0 and 5.12. So that's, I believe, a huge vote of confidence in what we are doing, and that's really terrific. The total amount of the commitment from the investment bank is $40 million. We're taking it in four tranches. So the issue is, what are we doing with the first $10 million? We're using some of it to buy back the existing debt. The reason that that's a good move is that this new debt is a 30-year deal, it's a lower rate anyway, but it's a 30-year deal which gives us more flexibility to build out the network. And so then, we spend the rest of it where? I told you at a meeting that we had after-town meeting that the delegates of EC Fiber would be working really, really hard to make sure that Woodstock placed in this contest. And we did that, we worked really, really hard. Unfortunately, we failed. We tried to engage the schools, we tried to engage every civic organization in Woodstock that we could identify, but we were unable to mobilize the community. Well, to put a positive spin on it, Woodstock played a pivotal role in allowing the following towns to win the contest. And that is Barnard, Thetford, Stratford, and our neighbors, Palmford. All right? So we did a good job in helping them.
How so?
And so those four towns during 2017 will receive all the attention and financial support of EC Fiber to build a GPON network. Oh, that's a word you may not be familiar with. GPON stands for gigabit... GPON stands for gigabit passive optical network. All right? So it's gigabit to the home, all right, for everyone in town that wants it. So we're not cherry picking, we're not going just down the main street or anything like that, everybody in town. And that's what we're using our money for in 2017, for the first tranche. Then in August of this year, we will be committing for the second tranche, and who goes for that one? Don't know the answer to that question now, but that commitment will be made in August. So the build-out for the first tranche is during the calendar year of 2017. So the rest of this year, planning goes on, all that sort of stuff, permitting, all that sort, to build in 2017. So that was a bit of a disappointment for us, but there is good news, because as you may know, there's a separate initiative going on in South Woodstock. If you've driven down Route 106, if you pause near the Springburg Farm, everybody knows where that pull-off is, pull off there, get out of your car, pat the spool of fiber, all right? I do it a couple times a week, all right? That is our spool of fiber. It's coming up from Redding, it is now almost to the Woodstock line. We have a couple of issues with regard to right-of-way and placing some poles on that road, or getting it buried underground, but we're going to be doing that in the next couple of weeks. And the objective there is to bring our gigabit network to the South Woodstock Country Store. And there, we're setting up an internet cafe. So for anyone who wants to find out what a gigabit network feels like, they can come down and test-drive it at the South Woodstock Country Store. Right? That's this summer. Now, I've been asked by a lot of people, okay, so now if we like it, can we sign up there? All right? Well, remember, we raised a hundred and fifty thousand dollars privately in South Woodstock to bring it that far. We don't know exactly how much money we will have left over when we get to the store, but our intent is to go as far as the money lasts. And our estimate is, in certain roads, within a mile of the store. Now, I've had people come to me and say, I live next to the Woodstock, Woodstock's in the Sports Center, will you come to my house? Ah, sorry, that's a little more than we're kind of thinking right now. But the important point is that once we get to South Woodstock and establish a presence there, there will be a natural creep into, I think, eventually into the town of Woodstock. I would like to see that happen before another four years goes by, all right? But if it takes, we can wait another four years. In the meantime, the South Woodstock people will have gigabit service. I think that deals with it. Okay, so that's moving ahead, it's moving ahead very fast. Now that we have the money, there's a lot of things that we can do now that we couldn't do before. So I appreciate the support we've received, particularly appreciate the support from the select board and buying some advertising for us to spread the word. We'll try again someday.
Thanks, Peter. How you doing?
Well, working as I do in the town of Barnard, I can say there was a lot of hype there going on about this, so you had some competition.
What they did in Barnard, thankfully, is because they were able to go door-to-door.
Yeah.
And the folks up there did a fantastic job canvassing the town.
Yeah.
Was it strictly numbers, or was it a per capita thing?
It was a percentage of population.
So that's where we fell down?
It's fair.
Too many people.
Yeah, too many people.
Hear that, Charlie?
No, we don't.
Moving on, our next end agenda item is-
Next end?
Yeah, next end. East End!
East End.
Is East End developer packets and RFP.
Well, this is a little unusual, in the sense that this is also an EDC project.
Yeah.
So I'm a little confused as to why it's under its own heading, but maybe because I submitted all of that information from Sustainable Woodstock. It is, and I submitted this package, I'm assuming you folks took a look at it, so I don't necessarily have to go through all the history of how this project came about. Just in general, the East End Action Group has been working in the East End, and by the way, I have Joby Thompson and Mary McVeigh, who have been very active in that group since the beginning here as well, and you guys are welcome to pipe up if you want to. That we've been working since 2009 to establish the Riverfront Park. Initially, it was started to have better economic development and to sort of revitalize the East End. The focus became on the park, because that was an easy thing to do. And now that we sort of have that going, we have gone back to the economic development piece. And so, last fall, we started talking with local stakeholders, people who had property that was on the market or available, and discovered that one of the issues is that there's just too many unknowns in the East End, too many people that own property that don't even really know about what is happening to their neighbors. So we started that last fall. In December, we did apply for a grant from the EDC to do a developer package, so to try to collate all of this information in one place. And then, there's the whole description about what we wanted in the package, just so that if we had conversations with the developers down the road, that they would be able to find this information fairly easily. We ourselves had a hard time finding it. So the idea was it would be in one place, it would be accessible, we would be able to attract people and give them that information. So, the EDC awarded the grant in December. We sent out RFPs to fifteen local and regional firms that had, most of whom had done work in the Woodstock area previously, and we received three decent proposals, of which we selected one. So, and that's what is on the front of you tonight. So that's the brief go-around. I don't know if Mary or Joby want to add anything.
And of course, that one for, I don't know if you've said it, Whiten Burke is the name? Yeah.
The issue is, we have heard from local realtors and people involved, and they're that they're prospective people down there, that there's just so many unknowns that they're turned off by it.
Sure.
So we really felt that if we could put together a package like this, it would attract more people, more developers, and it wouldn't be quite so frightening.
And much of the information is available, but it's not necessarily easily accessible and labor-intensive to collect. So one of the things that we, as a volunteer group, will help coordinate is with this winning bidder to provide contacts and/or some of the lake work to gather the information that we already know exists. And as both Sally and Joby have said, that one of the least appealing aspects of any development project in the go-no-go decision on the developer's mind is, what are the unknowns? What is quantifiable, what is not? And if there is too much risk perceived, they just walk away. And it's such a complex area. We're talking now about both the riverside area and the uphill side, the Garrish property, as well as the Woodstock Resort Corporation property, that are both for sale. So we're talking about the wider East End, so to speak.
So the twelve thousand dollars has already been approved?
Approved.
You're just asking, you're just asking for the-
Proceed.
Proceed with the firm.
With that particular firm.
So this was, part of it was, this is kind of a new process, and it's really Sustainable Woodstock, the East End Action Group had done the RFP and collected all the information and put the package together. So the EDC kind of, you know, said, rolled it over and said that we should go to you, because they had already approved it.
Right.
So it's, I think we're still working this out a little bit.
Yeah, you approved the notion of spending that money for this work. These are your bidders. This is their proposals, and now you hone in on it and pick your favorite one.
Okay. So, once again, these people are doing all the work, and have put a lot of time into it, and I'm very much inclined to go with their recommendation and give the approval for them to retain Whiten Burke.
Yeah, second.
So, yes, we'll consider that a motion. Seconded. Any further discussion? If not, we might as well move along. Those in favor of giving the-
Finding out what's underground.
Giving the formal notice to proceed to Whiten Burke, please say aye.
Aye.
Sounds unanimous. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
They ain't related to JP's, are they?
Jay and Burke, yeah.
Oh, very good.
President, this group has been able to get the property owners engaged in this discussion, and they are engaged and they're active, it's fantastic.
Well, that's good.
That's really-
Because I knew of at least one owner in the past that there's all this planning going on on land that they don't own, I own. Yeah, I know, I know.
That's a real advancement.
Yeah, good. Okay, if you folks, we're moving on to highly exciting things like a document shredder, so if you folks want to leave, you won't offend us if you leave.
Thanks very much.
Thank you all. I heard. I heard you were busy. I, a lot. I mean, I've got years and years and years of it.
Yeah, that's a great job.
I think that's the company that I've been talking to. Yeah. This is who I've been talking to, and I can certainly reach out to them. I'll be glad to talk to you, get the kind of stuff that they do propose. They always like five dollars to make it, but- He's got the whole day filled with the truck.
Three hours, a hundred and twenty-five hours. You're out of the park.
Talk to them.
Yeah, I can give you that information.
Thank you.
All right.
Shredding.
Document shredder. Phil?
Well, we've been storing and storing and storing papers, and boxes of papers, and upstairs in the attic, and there's no room, so I need to get rid of some.
No insulation there?
On the bleachers?
Yes, on the bleachers, stacked on the-
Oh, it's holding up the metal?
Yeah, exactly. So, I'd like to bring in a shredder. We can't just take it to the dump. Those days are gone, even if you wanted to recycle them, still, there's too much information that's considered private, whether it's ambulance, or police records, or tax documents. So I'd like to get started, maybe spend a couple thousand dollars shredding and make room to haul a lot of more records upstairs that are now out back, and out back is full.
Wow.
You've been around too long, Phil.
Well, as long as before I came here, it was full upstairs.
So this is a service that comes down, or-
We would hire a company. No, they would come here with a truck, and we shred it on the site. We would have to get things from the attic to the curb.
Big chute.
I will just add that we just did a shred event this past weekend, and we had a company come down from the Burlington area. And they spent three hours, it was not just secure shred, it was Vermont shred, and they did ninety-nine boxes.
Wow. Where?
We were out at Union Arena, and they charged us three hundred, a hundred and twenty dollars an hour.
So it's pretty easy to move. It's going to be dated in its box, and we're only, we have certain requirements, we can't throw everything away.
Yeah.
To keep things for dates, and I would just go back, start with, say anything that's pre-1990, which would be twenty-five years.
So they're covered with the truck.
They come with a truck, they shred it at the truck.
Right.
Right there.
Yeah.
Right here.
Yeah. Big chute.
I'd like to, I don't know if we can.
No, we can't.
But what we can do is use some of those big trash bins on wheels, get it down the attic stairs to the elevator, take the elevator down.
Yes.
Have to go through the job bank and get a lot of people.
It's a good service, I've seen it work.
Well, I think we can make a lot of space for a couple thousand dollars.
Definitely. You need a motion or okay?
Yeah, my number one, I'm glad you agree that it's a good idea to shred old documents that we don't need to keep anymore.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and go with secure shred.
Or just, I can shop it around and just-
Shred documents.
I'll second it.
Just a motion to authorize you to shred documents.
Sally may have a company that gives a better deal, I don't know that. I'd like to talk to them too now.
Well, sounds like we're pretty close to decision. Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no, I think we're all there. What does state law say about, I guess, just what, seven years for president?
There's different, no, there's, actually, the state law is not very clear on that.
Yeah.
Surprise, surprise.
Yeah.
The only thing I know for a fact is you cannot shred an original grand list. You keep those forever.
Well, they might have some value to historians, sure. Yeah.
I still look at them.
Yeah.
From the eighteen hundreds.
But as far as payroll, data, invoices, warrants, bills paid, checks, parking tickets. So I think we can fill a truckload pretty easy and then go at it again another year, but get started and-
Yeah.
Scan all that data and keep it. That's true. A person could.
But I didn't say that. All right, let's move on. Tax sale.
Yes.
You've got three of them here, and some new things, it looks like.
No, it's the same three.
No, but I meant a new message. Go ahead, I'll let you tell it.
Basically, we proceeded to engage Bill Dagger to handle the tax sales. It's not going to cost the taxpayers any money, because his fee gets added to the delinquent tax at the bidding time. These people have been contacted, and the bank, one of them has said, well, when, so the process is if we had a tax sale, June first, the person who bids, successful bidder, gets a receipt, and they will earn twelve percent interest until the taxpayer, it's redeemed or they get the property. So if it's redeemed on July first, that person earns twelve percent interest on their money for the month of June. If it does not get redeemed for twelve months, then the successful bidder gets a tax collector's deed. Not a warranty deed, not a quick claim deed, it's a tax collector's deed. And it's sold free and clear of all encumbrances, so if the bank holds a mortgage and does not, and gets it on the wrong month on their ticket system and forgets to come in, whoever buys it does not have to worry about the past owner's mortgages, or liens, or second mortgages, or anything else. It's free and clear.
Phil, what happens if there's no bid?
There's, the slushboard would be a bidder.
Yeah, okay.
And then, once your twelve months came up, then you go to a realtor and sell it.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear you say.
And if it sells more than the taxes, that money goes back to the original taxpayer property owner. You're not allowed to make a profit out of it.
Yes, I understand.
Well, it used to be, that's a recent twist in the law, it used to be, it wasn't addressed, and now it's addressed. So it needs select board approval to actually proceed to the sale.
Pretty much same process.
I was just wondering if there's any, for these properties, any prior inspection of the properties, but it's blind.
Blind. If the town become the owner, and in a year sold it, yes. Then there would be inspections and all those.
Yeah. I move that we go ahead with the tax sale.
I'll second that.
For all three properties?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So the advertised in May and the sale will be in- So the advertised in May and the sale will be in June and I really can't tell you what the exact date, it will be mid-June and I'll make sure that somebody's, oh, and maybe the board should authorize somebody to bid for the town to be owned and, you know, as backup.
Someone like you?
Someone like me or someone like Woody yourself. I will be here.
I, I move that we, Phil.
Yeah.
Represent us.
Yes.
I'll second, or whatever.
It's made and seconded. Those in favor of Phil representing us in the tax sale, please say aye.
Bidding for the town.
Aye.
Yeah, bidding for the town. Lynn will get it right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can I? Thank you.
All right. We have a couple permit requests. The first is overweight truck permits.
I have a couple of them and I review them and I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Next is Killington Road Race. And you're Gary, right? We met-
We met before.
Years ago.
Long, long time ago. I thought it would've been too long since I, I've come down, so I, I thought I would make the trip down this year.
Well, we appreciate that.
A night like tonight.
Well, snow, snow's kind of, that's where you came from, but the snow's kind of gone. Anyway.
Any feedback from Chief Bush?
Nothing negative.
Yeah.
It's not been a problem ever. Been doing it for a long time now.
Yes.
A number of years, yes.
I move we grant permission to use Tom Rhodes for the Killington State Race.
I'm sorry to make you drive all this way just to hear us say it's fine.
I wanted you to-
I wondered if it was not necessary, but I thought it's been five years.
You've been getting them for twenty years without me.
I'll second it.
Okay.
There's still an opportunity for discussion.
Right.
If you want to break up some problems.
No, not, no. I see that there are any problems. I, I do appreciate the, the use of the road and I think it's appreciated by the, the people that come here and certainly appreciated by the, the area for bringing people around the bush after this winter, so I, one of the places that we buy some food is the Bridgewater Store and she told me what a terrible winter she's had and she's only looking forward to it, so looking forward to this.
Well, it's good.
It's a, I think it's a fun event.
And you stop at the Barter Store too.
Yeah, we, yeah, we stop everywhere. We're here to follow.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think we're, we're good. Thank you.
Great, and how will it go from here? There was just some paper, will you just sign that?
We'll sign it and send it back to you, whatever your format it was in.
Yeah, great, it was just a, yeah, just a permission form that you signed electronically. It's fine if that works for you as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Now I'll go have dinner here in Woodstock.
All right. So I think we just, shall we move to sewer commissioners or would you rather, Phil, do the additions?
The trucks.
I guess we should do the, technically when we moved to sewer commissioners, we're segueing from one board to the other. So let's do the four-wheel-drive dump truck bid tabulation and then the paramedic vacancy, which is a, an unfortunate thing.
Yes, we're all sad about these, Alan Beebe's done an awesome job, Carl.
Yeah.
So John, you want to report about the old, the newest truck that we finally took delivery?
Yes, yeah, we finally got delivery of the last dump truck we got. We've got a new old dump truck.
New old, yeah.
They finally come across, fixed all the problems we had with it and it's been delivered to the town highway department.
I went up and looked at it and it looks great and the operator, which is, um, he went over it with a fine-tooth comb and, and I was instructed when I went to the building, I wasn't to touch it. I was just supposed to look at it. Well, I looked at it pretty careful and I think it's okay.
It's, it's probably been in Vermont as a built truck for five months and it's been, there have been scratches that need, there's been overspray on the paint, there's been this, there's been that and then... So we finally had some words and then they got around to it. The dealer who sells you the cabin chassis was having an internal fight with the subcontractor who builds the truck body, plow and so forth and so on. Got everybody in the same room and it took about ten days from there to get delivery.
Okay. Well, that's good and no, no action needed on that.
No.
Just a report, okay?
Just finally, we can move on to the new truck for 2016 because we finally got the 2015 one resolved.
Good.
It says 2017.
Yeah, well, by the time we get it.
It's a long process.
So Ken, when, we had the bid opening yesterday, Ken went through and compared all the bids with our specs to make sure that we weren't being shorted. So you have two packs of paper for you. You have this one that says 2017 truck bid and then the loose papers are the extended warranty.
Oh.
Okay, so put the loose papers aside for a second. And the proposal that's being recommended by staff is highlighted in yellow. It's from Patriot Motors for a 2017 Freightliner SD108 with, with the plow and the dump body, all set up by a company known as Viking for the price highlighted in yellow, which I can't see through and I don't know where mine is.
One thirty-six, three five five.
And then on top of that, we want the extended warranty at three thousand four seventy-nine and it's the most reasonable extended warranty of all the proposals as well. I don't see that.
And that one's from what?
Patriot.
From Patriot.
Oh, it's awesome.
For Freightliner.
Have we dealt with Patriot before?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right now, the one we're-
Good, I didn't recognize the name, but that's sweet.
We had some trouble with another dealer that-
Yeah, that I recognize. I, okay. Okay.
What do you think, John?
I think I'll, I'll go along with Ken's recommendation. We've talked this over a couple of times. So I think I'd go along with that.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
And that's for both the truck and the-
Warranty.
Warranty?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Motion's made and seconded. To buy a, a, a-
A truck.
A truck, one thirty-six, six seventy-eight, warranty and, so any further discussion? If not, then I guess we'll vote on it. Those in favor of following Ken Vandenberg's recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
I would say ayes have it.
Keep on trucking.
Good. All right, so that's the truck and then, oh yes, the paramedic vacancy.
Okay, so Alan Beebe, who has been our paramedic and our annual service coordinator for quite a few years now.
Yeah.
Has done a great job, is just too busy working several jobs and wants to simplify his life and he's given his notice.
Yeah.
So I met with our fire chief, Dave Green, today. And what I'm recommending is that we go hire a full-time paramedic who would also become an assistant fire chief. So if we found a paramedic who was not a certified firefighter, he would have, say, twelve months to get his level-one certification. So he could do things for us. He could help Dave with paperwork. He could go out on carbon monoxide monitors. He could-
Does that make sense, Duke?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, certainly we've heard from the public on multiple occasions that they want a true paramedic service.
They want a paramedic.
I mean, whether they truly know what the difference is, and I don't mean to be insulting, but I mean, yeah, no, they want to, they want to, as much as they can have a true paramedic service with-
We, we, you remember a few years ago.
Yeah.
I do too and I don't want to go down that road again.
That's right, so.
So the other thing I want to do, so I, I think this is our best bet. To get an assistant fire chief. I mean, some towns have paramedics, fire chiefs. We got a good fire chief.
Yeah.
And-
We had a good fire chief.
And we had a great fire chief. So.
Uh-oh, sorry, I didn't mean to do that.
Yeah. So what I want to do is, last time, we tried to replace a paramedic when Pat retired in a short window. I want to go a long window. I want to give people a chance to see it and write to us. And I want to cast a fairly wide net, as well as advertising in Rockland and White River, I'd like to go to Burlington and Bennington as well.
Yep. And-
It's a state certification?
Yes, so we would want, our requirements would be available Vermont paramedic or National Registry paramedic.
And this would include, before we get into the advertise, I mean, obviously it's gonna cost more money than what we're spending now.
Yes.
But you feel that's-
Well, we're paying, we're not.
No.
Not really.
I mean, you're gonna continue to have a lot of basic expenses. I don't envision doing away with our full-time daytime people.
I mean, we were paying Alan pretty good money for part-time.
For part-time, yeah, okay.
You're gonna be light.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I wanted to ask the question, okay?
You don't, I don't envision, see, having Alan part-time was just something that fell into itself.
And I know that.
Yeah, it just came.
It, it just, it just happened and I was glad we had the flexibility to do it that way because it was, it fit that person and our need.
For all I know, we may not be able to track them, but I think we will with this kind of money. And we're gonna advertise the job at a salary range of fifty-eight to sixty thousand dollars a year, depending on qualifications, full-time job, paramedic slash assistant fire chief, if you all think that's a good way to go. I don't know what else we can do. You can't-
No. I, I knew that as soon as I heard that Alan left. We certainly couldn't advertise it, the arrangement we had with him, because it just, there, it wouldn't be enough people.
It's too rare.
Yeah, it was too rare, yeah. So no, I, I understand that. Sure.
See what we get?
I think it's a good plan.
Yep, give it a try.
Okay, so you don't need an official action, but I, I-
Nope, you're, you're in agreement, Dave.
But the sense of the meeting seems very clear. Good.
And then we'll see what our net, net catches. Yes, Ed.
Now where will this paramedic you, that you're thinking about, gonna live in, has he got to live in Woodstock or?
Within the-
Right now, you're, um, he would be required to be in, either live in Woodstock or live within fifteen minutes of the station, fifteen, twenty minutes, or be in the building from six AM to six PM. Or in Woodstock from six A. He might want to, you know, get to Woodstock and eat breakfast. But to be close by from six A to six P.
So.
Don't have to live in Woodstock, but you have to be close enough to the station to respond, say, within fifteen minutes.
No, but I'm, what I was trying to figure was, you've got a regular paramedic on just twelve hours?
We do not have twenty-four-seven paramedic coach. What we, what we do, for those of you watching at home, and it's not really not something, it's a general topic of conversation around. But, so if something happened at nine o'clock at night and our paramedic is home, we have arrangements with Hartford and Lebanon who do a paramedic intercept. We hire them and pay them to meet our ambulance at the Queechee Mobile. And their guy would jump on our ambulance and provide paramedic-level service from there to the hospital.
Same, same, we got now.
That's what we have now.
That's we have now.
At night, and that's not gonna change. So you asked about what do you do if the person's not on duty, and that's what happened. So for the most part, our advanced EMTs handle ninety-five percent of the calls and you get a, a few that require extra attention and that's when you get your paramedic from a neighboring town if our paramedic is not available.
So right, so right now, Woodstock has not got a available paramedic.
Right.
It has.
That, that's what I mentioned when I said true paramedic service is that we don't have a paramedic twenty-four hours a day. We have, and, and that's goal, but we don't have it.
We do not have it. No, we do not.
It would cost quite a lot of money to recycle it. But we think we do pretty well. Why don't we move, okay, if we move on, Ed? Okay, why don't we move on to the Board of Sewer Commissioners? Because I think that's where we're at and we do have two requests before us.
Yes.
Christine Gould and Ruth Hunter.
Okay, let's see, Chris Gould is covered up first. Last year, she was charged for an apartment, which she did not have. She's asking for credit from last year for having paid for an apartment she did not have. In the past, the board has gone back one year on similar requests.
Which is what she's asking.
Yes. So you don't go back five years, you don't go back three years or seven, you cut it off at one in the past.
We do, uh, do follow a lot of precedents in the sewer business and so, um, if that's our precedence.
And I would make that motion that we grant the request to refund the four hundred forty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents from the Gould.
Second it.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I believe that. Anyone opposed? No. And then we come on to Ruth Hunter.
Ruth Hunter has a letter.
Yes.
It's on a different, different set of staples.
Yeah.
The next thing down.
Different set of staples?
Well, just because it's a staple package of the stuff.
Yeah. Shall I ask if you have a recommendation, Phil?
Well, it's tough. It's a tough one.
It is a tough one because I know, I, I know the principles involved and I know-
I have no, no objection really.
I, I, I was, I know we've made some hard decisions about this before. And I know that precedence is an issue. So I wasn't sure, Phil, what your, what your position would be.
No, I've got no problem.
Okay.
From Phil.
Then I would move that we grant this request.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, then those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the, the request is granted.
Moved through a lot of merchandise.
We have a lot of paper, a lot of people.
We need a shredder.
Get that shredder.
Yep, we haven't moved to a paperless society yet. Okay, I guess we're down to covering meeting minutes.
I've read the minutes over the, uh, make a motion we approve the minutes of March sixteen and April fifteen.
I'll second that.
I know, I can do one, but I can't.
Yeah, we might, um-
Couldn't even find a typo.
I'll throw one in one of these.
Just test it.
Why don't-
Test it. Spell his name out. So the, March sixteen-
Yeah, well, we can, we can-
Approve that one.
Yeah.
How move we approve that one?
Why don't we do them separately just because of, to be totally correct? So anyway, the motion is made to approve March sixteen and John, I guess, well, we'll, we'll consider that seconded.
Both of them, yeah.
Yeah, but we're gonna do them separately, John, that's all.
Because what was in here on that?
So those who approve the March sixteen minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Then we have the March, the April fifteen, which I was- Then we have the March, the April fifteen, which I was absent from and Bush was absent from, so, um.
I make a motion that we approve that, I reckon.
And I'll say.
Also.
Okay, and those that can vote on that, please say aye.
Aye.
If you agree. And three did, so those are approved as well, all right. We follow proper procedure.
Wow.
Wow. Anything else other than expense warrants?
No.
Move per turn pending the signing of.
We, it was, we're under two hours, so. Oh, you did have a memo here about signing warrants.
Yes.
Yes, we did.
So what we started.
Yeah.
Was, um, Randy's agreed to approve the warrants, an extra step in the process and look at them before they check the mail out.
So I can.
So the state statute.
I can question anything.
So we still sign them?
We still sign them. I signed it already.
But you look at them.
I look at them.
How nice of you.
Isn't that nice?
Does that mean you don't have to sit here while Ruth signs it?
I, I will just say that, working with the select board and Barnard, we got a request through the community block grant, they wanted to know what our policy was on signing warrants and I said, "Tell me what you want, 'cause I don't know what you're talking about." But that's probably what they want, yeah.
This is the minutes.
Okay. But that's already been taken care of, in other words.
Yes.
Okay. So I guess now what we can do is just entertain a motion to adjourn pending the signing of expense warrant.